Yes, where do we go next?
My instructing solicitor tells me that he has personally and successfully conducted one prosecution under the 1857 Act, although I said that I didn't think any of us had. There are such cases still around. Could I ask your lordships to turn please in my case, in the appellant's case, to paragraph six? Or root to paragraph six, I should go to paragraph two, paragraph two, second line. Could your lordship simply delete the words 'part of' in the second line of paragraph two? Because Freo made the point, and she's quite right, it shouldn't say 'part of', it should say 'which was least'. But now could I take your lordships to paragraph six, where there appear the three issues, and they're of course the same issues as appear at the end of the statement of facts and issues. So far as issue one, it's going to take the longest time. Issues two and three go very much together and will take much less time. Doesn't mean to say I conceive that there's any less value in them as points, but it won't take nearly as long. So far as issue one, which is the as-of-right point, it's largely a non-fact-specific point. In other words, it does not particularly apply to the facts of this case. It applies equally in the whole range of public rights of way and private easements generally. And it's quite clear, we submit, that the inspector and the registration authority approached the matter on the basis that to be neck fee, neck clam, neck precarious wasn't enough, there was also the additional matter of the deference issue. And we therefore say that if we're right on this matter, it follows that the decision would have to be acquashed and the land would fall to be registered. Lord, if I start, say at the outset, I've got ten very short submissions, and then I get to come to the authorities. The submissions are first of all that the tests under section fifteen, and it doesn't matter whether it's fifteen-two, or three, or four, are simple. They are simply three tests. Has there been twenty years' use for lawful sports and pastimes? Has it been by a significant number of local inhabitants? And does it meet the tripartite test, which as we say is the test of being as-of-right? If it meets those three tests, the land should be registered. Second submission. Where one has got those three tests, then if there has been acquiescence during that period, a right will be established in public rights, private rights, customary rights. There's no difference. Doesn't matter whether it's the language of grant, or the language of dedication, or the language of customary trusts. If there's acquiescence in the period of use of the tripartite test, the right is acquired. Third submission. Where the use is neck fee and neck clam, I hope I'm allowed to use Latin here, but I do so simply because it always has been so. Where the use is neck fee and neck clam, the use will have the objective appearance or look like the use of a person entitled to engage in lawful sports and pastimes on the land.
Look like what?
It will look like the use of a person entitled to engage in lawful sports and pastimes on the land. That's the key matter. Doesn't matter whether it looks as though you can stop the owner, or you can interfere with the owner. It will look like the use of a person who is entitled to engage in lawful sports and pastimes on the lands. And the owner has an election. He either can bring it to an end, or he can expressly permit it, or one has acquiescence.
If he expressly permits it, that could take the form of a licence, which you could then tell it.
Absolutely, absolutely, my lord. If someone trespasses on my land, and I say to him, fine, I'll give you a licence to come on my land, or I put him a notice saying, come on my land, then plainly it is the use thereafter is preferred. But so far as the landowner, when he sees people on his land, and they are acting neck clam, so it's an open use, he can either bring that use to an end altogether, or he can permit it. If he doesn't do either of those, he acquiesces in it, and it becomes a right. Where the use is at all times precarious, of course, the landowner will know that the person is on the land with his permission, and if he wants to stop the use, he can revoke the permission. But in any event, he knows that if it's a permissive use, it'll never grow into, develop into, a prescriptive right. That's why it doesn't really need anything additional. One's got, the key feature is the open use. My fourth submission is that where there is recreational use, which is neck fee and neck clam, it will always be known or constructively known by the landowner, and the landowner will always be able to stop it, or permit it. Therefore, to say that there's an additional ingredient in as-of-right, that the landowner be able to stop it, my links to Sturgis and Bridgeman and so forth, really doesn't have any application in relation to the recreational rights we're dealing with. It is certainly part of the law of acquiescence generally, that you can't acquiesce in something you can't stop. But so far as the exercise of lawful sport and pastime, which is done openly, you will always be able to stop it. Very difficult questions, where you've got waters flowing on the land, and some of the more complicated forms of easements, but no such issue arises here.
Are we concerned with your phrase constructively known to or by?
Well, here it doesn't matter, because there's never been any suggestion here that the owners, the local authority, weren't aware there were thousands of people recreating on the land. Here we've got straight knowledge, but there will be cases which arise where the owner is an absentee owner, but he's got an agent, and you get issues of, you know, the extent to which the ownership, the knowledge of his agent and so forth applies, and the test usually is, would a reasonable owner have known? Don't think they apply in our case, because there's no suggestion here. Now, if there were hundreds of people playing frisbee and football and so forth on the land, there's no suggestion it wasn't known. That's why I said initially, this is classic acquiescence grant. My fifth proposition arises from Sunningwell, is that there's no need for the inhabitants, or the people exercising the right to have any belief in the right. And indeed, in most of the cases, the user correctly will not believe he's exercising a right, because it'll only become a right after the twenty years. It sometimes does happen, as on our facts, that a number of people did believe wrongly that they were exercising a right. We've looked at some of those passages, and Mr Chapman concluded that they wrongly believed they were exercising a right. They didn't in fact have a right. There's a whole series of cases which says that that doesn't undermine your case, the mere fact you had a mistaken belief you had a right is entirely irrelevant.
In our case, but in fact they had exercised these rights for well over twenty years. So why didn't they have a right? Why wouldn't they have been entitled? I mean, assuming that they realised it's been going on for that long, they did.
Well, yeah, but none of them put it on the basis, we have already acquired a prescriptive right, and so far, and since the 1965 Act, the only way you can acquire a customary right to lawful sports and pastimes is through the route of the Act and registering a village green.
I see. So twenty years is no good at all under the earlier legislation. You actually had to register, did you?
Well, prior to 1965, it's a little bit of doubt on this, but I think the better view is that you could acquire a customary right, a recreational right, over land by twenty years' use. There was no register. All you could do was apply to the county court, or need the high court, for a declaration that there was now a customary right over the land. In 1965, you have a whole procedure, statutory procedure introduced, whereby if you want to register a customary right, you do it through the procedures of the 1965 Act. So that was the new thing to come up with. Before 1965, as a customary right, and as a matter we went over in Oxfordshire, there was a difficult question as to whether the customary right was just the right you were doing, or whether it was a general right. So that if you had dog walking and walking, with the customary right would probably have been only for walking and dog walking, and you wouldn't have been allowed to play football and throw frisbees. Under the village green legislation since 1965, you can register a right simply on the basis of walking and dog walking, but that then gives you a right to throw frisbees and picnic.
Well, we don't need to go back behind sixty-five, that gives us more than the twenty years we need.
Well, that's right. But so far as the people we had here, they weren't saying, for the most part, we have already got a customary right. What they seem to have, some of them thought it was a right under their conveyances, some thought it was because it was a common they'd got a right. The key matter is, it doesn't matter.
Quite.
But perhaps as important, as Lord Hoffman points out in Sunningwell, when people actually believe they've got a right, they will tend to assert their right in a slightly stronger way. It may well be, that may well be the case. He said that's irrelevant, but nonetheless, it was the fact here, that I think because Gordon Neale Kind thought he'd got an absolute right, he was particularly forceful in the way he went about doing it. But it doesn't matter, because we don't actually have to ask of these people, did they have a belief in a right? Sunningwell said that that is irrelevant.
Is there anything in the phrase that you look to see whether the public are acting in the way you would expect them to act if it had been dedicated?
Well, my lord, when, I think under section thirty-one of the Highways Act, if you were looking at a highways case, when your lordship mentions the public, I think there you were simply asking, you know, are there enough members of the public using this bit of land as-of-right? In my submission, it's not necessary to go on and ask, as an additional matter, the question, if this was a public right, is this the way the public would be, or people would be exercising it? My submission is simply not necessary to ask that. But it may be relevant to the question, if you've got, say, a handful of people going, it may be relevant to ask the question and say, well, look, hang on, if this was a public right-of-way, wouldn't there be the public at large going there? Whereas when we look at what's going on in this field, it's only a trickle of people, it really doesn't look as though it's the public. So that may arise there.
Well, I think it could arise in a situation where there's a debate, a debate as to whether this really is precarious, because the landowner might say, well, I saw them occasionally, perhaps once or twice a year, two or three people, and that was all that happened, and really there was nothing for me to be put on my election about at all, because there wasn't really the quantity of people, sufficiency of use, to make it necessary to decide whether or not to licence it or to close it down.
Well, unfortunately, on the facts of this case, where there's a finding of substantial number, maybe the point doesn't arise, but in my submission, under section fifteen of the Commons Act, it's quite clear, you've got this separate question, are there a substantial number of, sorry, a significant number of people, a significant number of inhabitants exercising?
Yes, you do, on the facts you reach the point, I quite see that. But I'm just trying to understand the principle behind the precarious idea.
I don't, I'm not sure, in the public right-of-way, again, you'll be asking whether there's evidence that the public are using the right-of-way. So far as the precarious case, that'll only come in if there is some evidence that there was either an express or an implied licence. We'll come to Beresford, and it's pretty clear that the occasions when the courts will infer an implied licence are pretty few and far between, and there generally has to be some clear act by the landowner which brings it home to the inhabitant, or the user, I should say, that he's acting by permission. And it's never been suggested here, nor has it suggested anywhere in either of my friend's cases, that what was going on here was a use by permission. That's not a matter which has ever been suggested, or, nor could it arise on the facts of this case, because there is no suggestion that it was a permissive use, but it's never been argued that way.
On the other hand, you could say, could you, that if, and I know this isn't his case, but if he was to rely on the precarious point, the significant user that was going on here was such as to require him to take his position on that election, then since he didn't turn them away to make it plain that it was with licence, he didn't do that, and therefore he can't rely on the third limb of the tripartite test.
That's right, lord. We say this is an absolutely simple case of acquiescence. And certainly, there's no suggestion that, I mean, Mr Chapman, we've looked at the passage under the heading of precarious, it was only the two thousand and three notices that he thought was the only instance of precarious, and we of course are relying on the period before that.
Well, that was the fifth point, I think.
The sixth point is that as-of-right means as-if-of-right. For that I rely on what Lord Walker says in Beresford, which we'll come in a minute, drawing on a very Scottish authority, as-if-of-right. And therefore, we can disregard any use which was by right, i.e. whether because of a permission or as a result of a trust under the Open Spaces Act, or under rights conferred under the Public Health Act 1875. Those are uses which are by right. To obtain the right of a village green, the use has got to be as-if-of-right, which is distinguishable from the use being by right. And that must be so, because otherwise we're going to have the situation that a local authority with, who've got a recreation ground managed under the 1875 Act, people go on it, and it's going to be said, well, there was never an express permission, they were going in, they were going in, neck fee, neck clam, might be some argument on precarious, but the true answer is they were going in by right. The public were entitled to use a public recreation ground until such time as a local authority appropriates the public recreation ground for another use. That land's never going to become a village green. The seventh point is that the only exception, or possible exception, to the tripartite test are the cases where the users expressly represent to the owners that they are not claiming any right at all. Of course, you may think these will be a rare case, but let's assume that seeing that the owner doesn't seem terribly happy about what's going on, the user's solicitor writes a letter and says, I absolutely assure you, there's no question of us ever claiming a prescriptive right.
That's a kind of a stoppall point, that really, it's a stoppall point.
What we say to that is that there are three answers to that. First of all, it's a plain case of a stoppall by representation, and a representation as to private law is one of the classic grounds, it's the common law principle of a stoppall by representation. Well, that's not quite the end. Secondly, arguably, that then becomes a precarious case, because the land that the owner, in reliance on the assertion, has allowed them to go on the land. But I think a better way of putting it may be that it's a version of clam.
What?
Of clam, secrecy. The person's put up a smokescreen. They've, in fact, they've written a letter saying one thing, and they've carried on with their use, and then they say it's something quite different. They've deliberately concealed the nature of their use, and so it could be clam. In any event, my lord, it doesn't apply remotely on the facts of this case, but if I was asked, I would put it on the grounds of a stoppall or clam, though in some cases it might be precarious. But I don't regard it as a sort of real exception to the rule, and it doesn't depend upon any doctrine of appearances of any sort. One can deal with that quite separately. Well, I mention it to get, to come back, to come back to it, there's a field common case where we'll find that the matter arose, and in the case of Mills and Silver, we'll find reference there to another authority where solicitors had written letters, and so there are two instances which are where this has happened, and in either case has the person acquired the right. And I think your lordships have a gut reaction, says that, you know, you can't conceivably acquire the right, and how is it? And I think the answer is, as I say, a stoppall is the clearest answer to that. The eighth point is that qualified rights can exist both at public law and in private law, e.g., public rights of way which are subject to the farmer's right to plough, or some public rights of way which are subject to the owner's right to erect market stalls, provided he allows sufficient passage. And your lordships will find those cases, I'm not going to go to them now, in volume one of the authorities, at tabs twenty-three, one, and two. But so far as establishing them, there's exactly the same test of as-of-right, that you've got to have exercised the limited right, neck fee, neck clam, neck precarious, for the necessary number of years. Whether today it's still possible to acquire that sort of limited right over a field, such as plough, I have some doubts, because there's now an express provision in section one, three, four of the Highways Act 1980, which allows the farmer to give notice and to plough up footpath, so as it were, history has moved on, and it's no longer really necessary. But there are certainly some nineteenth-century cases on it. But the key thing is that so far as they're exercising...
He can plough it up, but he can't get rid of it, can he?
No, he can just plough it up, and then he's got a limited period of time to reinstate it.
He has to reinstate it.
Yes.
At the meantime, can you walk across the ploughed field?
Well, my lord, if you could walk across the ploughed field, my lord, if your lordship would turn to volume four of the authorities bundle, and just go to tab forty-three, and it's the last item of tab forty-three, and it's tab one, three, four, one A, if the occupier desires and causes good husbandry to plough or disturb, and it's not recontinued, the public right should be subject to condition that the occupier has the right to do so, and then where he's disturbed it, he's got to make it good, which is one, three, four, three. So there's an express provision now which deals with the matter. What it doesn't deal with is the matters whether you can just keep on going, and my lord, I don't think so. And I think that the answer to Lord Brown's question is, yes, you can.
Yeah, I would infer that from the last words of subsection one, that the public right-of-way exists, but it's subject to the condition that the occupier's right to plough. I mean, it makes it rather dirty and untidy, but whatever else, you can still use it.
But that means you, one no longer really needs the old concept of the establishment of the, that the right over the ploughed field was a limited right. You don't really need it now that one, three, four's come in. It was earlier necessary in order perhaps to protect the farmer, but now one, three, four gives him the protection, he's got the statutory right.
Well, there are other examples. I mean, one could have a path which occasionally is used by a farmer to take his flock of sheep down, and I know from standing sometimes at gates, the flock of sheep seems absolutely endless as he goes on and on and on, and you can't go ahead for some ten minutes, whatever it is, it interrupts your right of passage, but it's just something that you live with as part of the nature of the countryside you're walking through.
And my lord, I see, that's part of the give-and-take provision, which frequently arises. You're out on a nice country walk, you're on the footpath, and the farmer comes by in his tractor, and you hang back, you see him coming, and he's got a great container, trailer behind him, and you stop on the footpath, and you allow him to go past, well, now, plainly, in one sense, you're deferring to him, but if for twenty years you'd used that path, and all was said was that whenever the farmer drove past, you'd always actually stopped and let him go past, I don't believe it would be said you haven't established your right-of-way under section thirty-one, but if the Court of Appeal is right here, then you will plainly have adjusted your behaviour, and it's then said, oh, you've shown that there's a greater right, and you can't acquire the right. In my submission, that is simply wrong. The ninth point is that if, and we don't accept that that is the position, if what the local inhabitants here have done is engage in lawful sports and pastimes, limited to not interfering with the playing of golf, if that's the proper interpretation...
Sorry, could you just say it again?
If, and I say we don't accept this, but if what the local inhabitants have done is to engage in lawful sports and pastimes, but limited to not interfering with the playing of golf, then the test for as-of-right is precisely the same tripartite test, because what one's concerned with is, have they engaged in lawful sports and pastimes? And section fifteen doesn't say anything about having used the land exclusively. I suppose your lord would just like to glance again at section fifteen. It could perfectly well have been worded that where a significant number of the local inhabitants had used land exclusively, or where land had been used exclusively by a significant number of the local inhabitants for twenty years for lawful sports and pastimes, one could readily have achieved that, but that's not what the section says. All that's needed is that they have used the land. We know actually they've interfered with the golfers, because their dogs have kept defecating over the golf course, and they've been picnicking and caused the golfers to stop in their play and ask more, and they've been, they positively have actually been everywhere. But if, the view is, they've only asserted a limited right, it doesn't, in my submission, help the objectors. The same test applies, and there's nothing in section fifteen which fails to prevent, which prevents this becoming a village green.
But has it ever been part of the law relating to either public or private rights of way, that the user has to be in a position to exercise that right exclusively? In other words, to exclude any other user of the route that's being selected?
Not so far as I'm aware.
I mean, that would seem rather extraordinary, which suggests that the owner of the servient tenement wasn't able to use it.
Well, my lord, your lordship's entirely right. In most of the private rights of way and public rights of way cases, it is overused land, and plainly, the, you know, the user hasn't had exclusive use of the land during the twenty-year period. He's had a shared use, and thereafter works by the principle of give and take and reasonfulness between the parties. It may seem offensive, but actually, if you think about it, that is what happens up and down the country. My tenth proposition is that there is no decided case established where a claim which met the tripartite test failed on the ground of absence of appearance of as-of-right, except... Except for three cases. The first is Sturges and Bridgman, which is vol. three thirty-seven. Your lordships remember, a nuisance in Bermond's is not the same as one in wherever it was, Belgrade Square. That famous, fa- fa- famous case. And, and that turned, that emphasized that you've got to be able to stop the nuisance. And you may remember the, the medical practitioner hadn't had his surgery up at the far end. And he hadn't known that it was noisy and it was held he couldn't have stopped it earlier. So that's merely dealing with, with the elementary point of the law of acquiescence, that there can't be any acquiescence unless you're in a position to stop it. And I've already mentioned, and that's irrelevant to anything we have to deal with here. The second case is the field common case, which is volume one, page twelve, which I mentioned a little back. And that was a case where there was a clear representation, an express representation, that a right wasn't being acquired. And we've already looked at how that's covered by the law of estoppel or clam or possibly a precario. The third case is the Lang Holmes case. And that case, I, I can't possibly distinguish. I think I have to say that was wrongly decided, as Mr Pike did in settling the pleadings. That was the case, which remind all lordships, was the case where there was a farmer and he simply took a hay crop. And while he was taking, while he was fertilizing the land and while he was taking the hay crop, the inhabitants stayed to the edge of the field and didn't actually go in front of the tractor. So lords, that's the.
And roughly, how long did it take respectively to fertilize and to crop?
Oh, very short, matters of days.
We are talking about days.
And the hay, and it was, it was questionable days. And the haymaking, we'll, we'll come to it a lot of, haymaker was a bit longer because they, it's slightly dependent on the weather, how long you had to leave the hay in, how long you had to leave the hay in the field. And it's arguable that that case, I mean, when we come to it, we see the case would have been decided the same on several other grounds. It could have been decided the same way on the principle of interruption, that there were periods of a week to ten days when there was no user of key parts of the field. But undoubtedly, its ratio is on the grounds that there was deference. And that's why we'll come, we'll, we'll come to it. And I face up to the fact, I've got to, I've got to show that that case was wrongly decided. Lords, having set out my ten points, can I very quickly look?
Well, if you're leaving at ten points, could I ask you to return very briefly to the sixth point? Uh, your, your submission is that as of right should be construed as, as if of right, relying on Lord Walker in Beresford. Uh, i- i- if that's right, I'm sure it is. Another way of putting that might be as if they had the right, as if those who engaged in the relevant activities acted as if they had the right.
Yes.
How is the question whether they have acted as if they had the right to be judged unless they give the outward appearance of acting as if they had the right?
Lord, I, we'll look at all the authorities. It is judged by the simple question. Uh, the primary test is, was it secret or open? If it was open, i.e. it was neck clam, you can see what it is they are doing. And then, and if, if people are going on land and exercising a right, be it a right of way, or it may be all sorts of other strus forms of easements or recreational rights. If they are doing this in an open manner, then the court, then that is sufficient to make it as, to make it as of right, provided it wasn't precarious by permission or forceful.
So it's, it's, it's open use or open engagement in the activities.
Yes.
Which brings a hallmark of as if of right.
The landowner, if he sees something openly going on, I come back to my point of election. He either permits it or he stops it or he acquiesces in it.
Well, your basic proposition is as if of right means no more and no less than that it is without force, without secrecy and without permission.
Simple as that. Lords, so far as the autho- the, the textbooks, I, I deal with them first because they deal with the matter generally, whereas in the cases, of course, everyone's always dealing with particular facts. Well, could I ask your lordships to turn to my case at paragraph twenty-two? And I start, and we're going to need volume four of the authorities, please. Um, and I start with a, a passage from Gale in my paragraph twenty-two. And Gale is at tab forty-nine. And starting at page two, four, two in Gale. There is a discussion of what is meant by user neck V, neck clam, neck precario. And then the passage I cited is at the top of page two, four, three. Where an easement other than light is claimed on section two of the act, it settled the enjoyment which the claim is based, must seem as of right. And there is then set out, what is meant by as of right is summarized in the various passages at page two, four, two. Including the important passage by Lord Davy, which we'll come to a little later towards the bottom of page two, four, two. An enjoyment as of right must be neck V, neck clam, neck precario. That's Hodgson's Brewery. Now, my lord, it's fair to say that at page two forty in Gale, there is set out the passage from Bright and Walker, which we'll come back to a little bit later. Which is the passage which includes the phrase, not openly and in the manner that a person rightfully entitled would have used it. But I'll be coming back to that in a, a little later. And it doesn't appear that the authors are suggesting that that is in any way an additional test to the test of it being neck clam, i.e. an open use. And I get to come back to that a, a little bit later. In my case at paragraphs twenty-five and twenty-six, I set out some quotations from Riddle and Trevillian, which those of your lordships who've done public rights of way case will know is, is a very valuable book. And it's at our tab fifty-six. This is the same Riddle who wrote the article about this, Tompkins. And if I could take your lordships to page forty-one, halfway down, page forty-one. There's the passage which I quoted in the, our case. In prescribing the nature of the use required for an influence of dedication to be drawn, the same principles were applied, as in the case of a claim, that a private way have been dedicated, neck V, neck clam, neck precario. That is to say, without force, without secrecy, without power, user that complied with these three requirements is termed user of, as of right. And my lord, then going on to page fifty-seven. Where the authors.
Have to.
I, no, no, my lord, the same extract from Trevillian and from Riddle and Trevillian with page forty-seven.
Forty-seven, yes.
It was still in tab fifty-six.
Yes.
Go on, please, to page forty-six, where there's a heading as of right. And he's discussing the position under section thirty-one of the Highways Act nineteen eighty. And the key passage is the last sentence of the first paragraph on page forty-seven. The common law requirement that a user must have been as of right remained untouched. Thus, user as of right under the Highways Act carries the same meaning as in the common law prior to eighteen thirty-two. With regard to the meaning of the words as of right, the common law adopted the Roman law principle that for long usage to give rise to presumption of dedication, the user had to be neck V, neck clam, neck precario. And that is what as of right means. And the same point is made on page forty-eight, under the heading without permission, halfway down the page. Without force, without secrecy and without permission, this is the meaning of as of right. No less and no more. Lord, then in my case at paragraph twenty-seven, I cite from Sauvain. And that is tab fifty-seven of appendix four. Your lordships are no doubt be familiar with the other leading textbook on highway law by Stephen Sauvain. And at.
I mean, I.
We're, we're at tab fifty-seven.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I, I imagine that's a throwaway line because frankly, I mean, I've never heard of it in my life or indeed most of what you've been referring to. So I mean, it's a courtesy to suppose that we know something about this, but in my case, I do.
Well, my, my lords, all, all I can say is that those of us who have to deal with public rights.
I'm sure.
We tend to use these two books. Mr Sauvain has written, it's now into the fourth edition on highway law. And the, the, the book by Riddle and Trevillian's been through many editions. It used to call that the glue book. And it's a sort of, the two manuals we, we tend to have. So that doesn't mean to say they're right, but lords, it, it's, it's helpful to see how they deal with it. Now, if we come to Sauvain, it's page fifty-eight of Sauvain. Uh, halfway down, page fifty-eight, at paragraph two, four, six, four. The passage we cite at paragraph twenty-seven of our case. And he's dealing with the meaning of as of right. As of right of the same meaning as the common law requirement that a way should have been used, neck V, neck clam, neck precario. And is derived from the law of easements. The first two elements, absence of force and stealth, are directed at the openness of the use, the implied knowledge of the landowner and the opportunity available to that landowner to have prevented entry into his land by those asserting the public right.
And then at two, six, eight, he comes on page sixty, this is to discuss neck precario, doesn't he?
And there's a, there's a discussion of that. And again, it's discussed in the lines referring to Beresford, which was of course the village green case. And to the passage from Lord Rogers' opinion in Beresford. And the essence of the matter. Lord, next, could I take your lordships to tab fifty-three? Which is, we've already glanced at, which is McGarry and Wade. And we can see a heading, user as of right. Uh, the claimant must show user right to be entitled to it. There is no ground for assuming enjoys it. User as of right doesn't mean user of right. That's what I was saying to buy right. Its meaning is closer to user as if of right. And that quotes down to Lord Walker's speech in Beresford. From early times, English authorities have followed the definition of Roman law. The user which will support a prescriptive claim must be a user, neck V, neck clam, neck precario and so forth. And then the passage Richard Lawrence relies on is halfway down the page. The essence of the rule is that the claimant must prove not only his own user, but also circumstances which show that the servient owner acquiesced in it as an established right. But that, that will be inherent if it's been an open use. And it hasn't been either prevented or permitted, he will have acquiesced in it. And that passage, the footnote, I'm reminded, takes us back to Sturges and Bridgman. That's footnote two thousand, two hundred and three. Now, the only possible hint of a broader test which I've been able to find is Gray and Gray, which is why I felt bound to draw your lordships' attention to Gray and Gray. And it's cited in our case at footnote eleven on page ten. Gray and Gray, and that in, it's tab fifty. Uh, also a book after the time some of us learnt our land law, but it's now into its fifth edition. And so far as Gray and Gray, if your lordship would go to page six, six, nine. In line four, there's the passage which we quote in footnote eleven of our case. It is commonly said that prescriptive user must be exercised, neck V, neck clam, neck precario. User as of right must be enjoyed openly and in the manner that a person rightfully entitled would have used it. And that takes us back to Bright and Walker. But what is, it's not at all clear, uh, because your lordship will see footnote four, uh, Bright and Walker. But it's, it's not at all clear that whether, that the author is saying that that's an additional test. My submission, that is simply runs along with it being an open use, a use which isn't neck clam. It will be openly. And if it is openly, it will be in the manner a person rightfully expected to deal with it. But I thought I would draw your lordships' attention to the way that is put there and then.
Sorry, can you just, I haven't picked that up actually, I'm, I'm looking at page six, six, nine?
We're looking at six, six, nine, lord. And it's the, the fourth line.
Yes.
It's commonly said. I draw attention to the last sentence of the paragraph, lord. It's because of that sentence that I felt bound to, it's the last sentence. User as of right must be enjoyed, I'm sorry, it's the penultimate sentence. User as of right must be enjoyed openly in the manner, that's the Bright and Walker passage.
Oh, I see.
Because of that, that's, it's not clear that he is saying that's an additional test. But I felt it right to draw it to your lordships' attention.
Mr George, I mean, my recollection of the Roman law is that the requirement is of the way you acquire the possession. In other words, I mustn't go in by force and, or I mustn't go in by stealth. But if I have gone in by force and I'm in by stealth. Then, I mean, I could carry on very happily and I wouldn't be, I didn't need, wouldn't need to have my band of men there all the time and I wouldn't need to hide myself, I might indeed. But if I'm, however open I am about it, if the origin of my possession was V or clam, then that's the end, then that's the end of it. So it's not, I, I'm not quite sure, all this stuff about openness and so on. It's, I mean, it's, certainly in Roman law, it's the way you acquire the possession. And I just wonder whether there's anything like that in, it's getting slightly odd.
I think in English law, it's, it is both the mean to acquire it and I would, if you, we, we're not concerned with the clam case. We're, we're not compared with a V case. But if you did have a V case, there's, there's, the problem with the V cases in village greens is the person who exercises the V is usually the first person who snips the fence and goes through. Thereafter, a, a number of people go through the hole and they don't know that it was ever forcefully snipped. And I think the general view is there that although the, although there may be the first years' use or something may possibly be V, thereafter, if there's another twenty years, it will have been not by V. So you've got to show that throughout the twenty, the, the, the owner has to show, um, or it doesn't matter which side around it is, the onus of proof is actually on the claimant. He's got to show that he's got his twenty years' use. And in each of those twenty years' use, he hasn't been acting forcefully. He hasn't been, he, he's, he hasn't been acting secretly, he's been acting openly. And he hasn't in any of those years been subject to a permission. If he's had a permission, for instance, for one year, that will suffer.
But suppose I got onto your land by force. And I sat there for twenty years, sporting myself, playing ball games and walking my dog and so on. And so was it, it might be, or lots of people did that. I mean, would that, would, would that somehow or other cure the, the original this?
I think that probably would do it. I mean, if, if, if having gone on there, you positioned yourself with a shotgun.
Oh, no, that would then continue.
To give an extreme example, but if, if you, if you had, if, if your force was simply concerned to the fact that you initially snipped the, stepped the fence and went through, if thereafter, for twenty years, uh, for, for a clear period of twenty years, uh, you used the matter, neck V, neck clam, precario. You will have twenty years in which your use hasn't been subject to, your, your use will be all right.
It's a sort of continuing thing, isn't it?
As I said, my lord, I haven't actually come across a case as a V case, but I think that would.
But if clam, it would imply the same.
Well, so far, so, 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 so far as clam, there you would plainly, you, you plainly have been, as long as you've been there for twenty years openly, the landlord's got his choice. So the point about V is if you're, if you're actually going in there with a blunderbuss, uh, the landowner can't be expected to resist you at that moment. But, um, so as, once you are there and you're not actually using any force, there's no earthly reason why he shouldn't go down there and negotiate. and negotiate with you and say, 'Look, either I'm going to take you to the county court and seek an injunction against you, or I'm going to permit you and I'm going to put up this notice now, and say, 'Will you please', or alternatively, 'Will you please get off the land, and I go to replace that fence, and will you please stay out from now on?'.
But I mean, in Roman law, if you, if I knew that you were going off to attend the Senate, and I deliberately chose the moment when, for the first time for many years, you had left your land, and I went in, I would go in clam. And I would, I mean, I don't think that would be enough, because I would have got in by stealth. So, my possession would always be by stealth. Now, I'm not saying that is the position, I just want to be clear. I mean, if I get in by stealth, because I, you know, I know I go in at night, or I go in when nobody's watching, or when they're all watching the World Cup, or something like that. I mean, if I do one of these things, I get in by stealth, then can I, if I then disport myself, is that all right?
Yes, my lord, I think it is, because if you come in at night, if you are positively by stealth, if you're positively keeping the owner out, well, then you're plainly v. But if otherwise, if you come in by night, you can't count that night as part of the twenty-year period. But if thereafter, you besport yourself on the land and throw frisbees for a full twenty years openly, you're not using any force during the twenty years, you're not using any clams.
Yeah, sure, my submission, yeah.
Lord, just before we leave Gray and Gray, could I just take your lordship to page six seven three, paragraph five two point seven one? There's quite a useful passage on informed acceptance of use, I don't think it goes much beyond Beresford. 'A prescriptive right can be established for a particular user such as to bring home to the mind of a recent person a continuous right of enjoyment is being asserted', that's Mills and Silver, which we'll come back to. 'If in these circumstances the alleged servient owner does nothing, he'll be taken to recognise the right and not intended to resist it. It will be of no defence to him later to assert he merely tolerated the user in question. The mere fact that the servient owner couldn't have stopped the user within the prescription period is not inconsistent', sorry, 'the mere fact that the servient owner could have stopped the user within the prescription period is not inconsistent with the concept of user as of right. The critical point is precisely the fact that the servient owner took no steps to halt the adverse user. No claim as of right can be asserted if the alleged servient owner has demonstrated a willingness to exclude from or exert control over access to dispute facilities' land. No acquiescence arises, for instance, where a supposed servient owner has allowed user under a purely temporary license. Overt conduct by the landowner which unmistakably underscores the precarious nature of the user ultimately excludes the, excludes the claim of prescription. Positive acts of permission or permissive control indicate conclusively that the owner intended to retain the property's land and did not intend to concede any of that property.' And that goes to Lord Hope's point, to Lincoln's in. I mean, if you are regularly closing the gates, or something like that, that is a sufficiently positive act of so, whereby you are excluding the user for particular periods of time to give rise to an implied licence of self in Beresford. But there'll have to be distinct periods when the people are being excluded. We say that that is completely different in kind to the inhabitant who simply pauses while the stroke is being played and immediately then passes behind the ball. Lord, against those, my lords, that passage, I think, is a helpful summation of the law, and acquiescence, I say, didn't add anything. Lord, there's an alarming number of authorities. Could I go first of all to the only authority I know on customary rights, which is not actually in the bundle, but I'll ask if it could be circulated, and if your lordships could add it to bundle five as number sixty-three, and it is the case of Mills and the Colchester Corporation. The issue in the Court of Common Pleas was whether the inhabitants were entitled to the grant of a licence to fish on paying a reasonable sum. And we find that at page four eight four. If your lordship will go in this copy to page three of five, in the top right-hand corner, page three of five, and the end of the first main paragraph, your lordship will see, the claim was that 'Every such oyster drigger hath of right been used to demand, and hath the same of the defendants, upon payment of such reasonable fee.' So, that was the claim. The answer was no, they weren't, because they'd never been entitled as of right, but only by permission of the corporation. And the passage which I just take your lordships to, first of all, on page three of five, which is page four eight four of the text, your lordship will see, the little four eight four with an asterisk, just below that, 'First objection that the claim is to a profit to be taken from the land of another', and then the last words, 'whereas a custom to be valid must be reasonable', just a reminder to your lordships that it's of the essence of customs that they've got to be reasonable. And then, one comes on to the bottom of that page, six lines up from the bottom in the penultimate paragraph. 'To find a right upon enjoyment of this description was argued, and we think successfully, to be at variance with first principles. Equally in the case of custom, as in that of prescription, long enjoyments in order to establish a right must have been as of right, and therefore neither by violence, nor by stealth, nor by leave asked from time to time, and of the latter character was the enjoyment relied upon in this case.' So, you've there got the doctrine of nec v, nec clam, nec precario being applied back in the eighteen seventies to a claim to a customary right. Lord, and that case was cited, I think, with approval by Lord Hoffman in Sunningwell at three fifty, letter H, I just give your lordship the reference now, three fifty, letter H, that's volume three, tab thirty-two, we'll come to it in a moment, three fifty, letter H. Now, my lord, I want to take your lordships, and I hope your lordships won't find it too laborious, to know fewer than nine House of Lords authorities which bear on this matter. The first of these is a case which your lordships will all have learnt about at University Dalton and Angus, and it's in volume one, page nine. And your lordships, remember, it's hugely long, because the judges were asked to act, as it were, as if they were in the European Court, by giving a sort of preliminary view before their lordships went on to deliver judgment on a difficult case relating to rights of support. And, lord, if I start with the passage which is cited in my case at paragraph twenty, and which we've already looked at in McGarry and Wade, it's at page seven seven three, in the famous referring judgment of Mr Dustis Fry, who is the one who's always remembered in this case, and it's the bottom paragraph of page seven seven three. 'Leaving technical questions aside, I prefer to observe that in my opinion the whole law of prescription, and the whole law which governs the presumption or inference of a grant or covenant, rests upon acquiescence.' And he says that's an expedient principle to quiet possession. And then we go to the top of page seven seven four. 'What are the ingredients in many cases, as for instance in the case of acquiescence which grants creates a right of way? It will be found to involve the doing of some act by one person upon the land of another, absence of a right to do that act, knowledge, power to prevent, and lastly, abstinence by him, that's the owner, from any such interference for such a length of time as renders it reasonable for the courts to say he shall not afterwards interfere to stop the act being done.' In some cases, some of these ingredients are wanting, but I cannot imagine any case where there hasn't been knowledge, power to stop, and abstinence from the exercise of it. Now, all that, I think, is simply, is now well understood by everyone as the basis of acquiescence. If I could then ask your lordships to follow through the judgments of their lordships, one starts at page seven ninety. And Lord Kellridge had to be elsewhere, but got in first, he was allowed to go first, and he simply concurred with what Lord Solborne and Lord Blackburn were going to say. So far as the Lord Chancellor, we can please pick him up at page seven nine five, at the bottom of page seven nine five. Five lines from the bottom. Ashurst, Mr Dustin Ashurst, in Palden and Pickerskill, they take it down as a general rule that every prescription is good if by any possibility it can be supposed to have had a legal commencement. Be the theory what it may, its true foundation is that which the Romans called usage capio, under the conditions defined by Sir Edward Cook. And then he quotes from Cook, 'Both to customs and prescriptions, these two things are incidents inseparable, possession or usage, and time.' If I could just interpose, of course, it would be usage in the case of a servitude and easement, rather than possession. Possession must have three qualities, must be long, continual, and peaceable. Now, peaceable is of course nec v, or it is said, and then there's the passage in Latin, and the important bit is longer, it's got to be long, i.e. for a space of time defined by the law, in our case, that's the twenty years in the act. It's got to be continual, because it's not been legitimately interrupted, and it's got to be peaceful, because that which was contentious, if there was contention, wouldn't be justified. And then he goes on, 'longest uses, nec v, nec clam, nec precario', the Latin is from Bracton. 'All these conditions are capable, in my judgment, of being fulfilled as to the right of sport to buildings, and when they are fulfilled, I am unable to understand why the right should not be held to be prescriptively established.' And then he goes on halfway down the page about the policy and purpose of the law is that when length of possession has been less than a memorial, it rests, rest would be defeated or rendered very insecure if exceptions to where it admitted, on such grounds as that a particular servitude is negative rather than positive or incoat enjoyment, or that resistance could not be conveniently practicable. So, he's really saying it's a principle that. And then an important point at the bottom of seven nine six, five lines from the bottom, 'But against this, he has his own remedy if he chooses to prevent and interrupt it.' Goes back to what I always say, that the owner has got the possibility. That power of resistance does exist, otherwise mere question would arise. And over page seven nine seven, about ten lines down, 'They can always be interrupted. When a man wishes and finds it for his interest to make such a use of his own land, it will have that effect. So long as it does not suit his purpose or his interest in this, the law which allows a servitude to be established in large by long and open enjoyment against one whose preponderating interest has been passive during the whole time necessary for its acquisition seems more reasonable and more consistent with public convenience and natural equity than one which would enable him at any distance of time to destroy the fruit of his neighbour's diligence, industry, and expenditure.' So, if the owner sits back, he simply loses out. And then at page eight hundred...
I mean, not much diligence, industry, and expenditure required to go and take your dog on to the golf course, is it?
Well, on the facts of this case, of course, he was dealing with someone who had, who'd happened to put up a, who'd put up a building, but the principle is that the landowner shouldn't sit on his rights, that's the basic principle. Because if the law didn't have that, then people in certain circumstances might spend money. Maybe that's going to be more a case in cases of adverse possession and the like.
Well, the kind of examples he gives at page seven nine seven of the Altius non telendi and things like that do involve quite a lot of expenditure, don't they? If you're going to build that high, you really ought to be, oh, notice you can't do that. Are we going to get much more out of...
Well, my lord, I just wanted to take your lordship to eight hundred, where at the bottom of eight hundred, eight lines from the bottom, where he's dealing with the eighteen thirty-two act, and it's four, six lines from the end. 'The section, therefore, assuming to apply, would in the present case be sufficient to establish a title by prescription to the right, unless it had been enjoyed v or clam or precario.'
Don't you think we've heard those three words often enough? Is there some way of avoiding the constant repetition of the...
I use the phrase the tripartite test.
Well, whatever.
Then, lord, and there's a passage at the top of eight oh two, which urges an owner, if he wants to inquire into the particulars, and if information is improperly withheld, or receives false information, or if anything could be shown around secretly, and so forth, the case would be different. So, the onus, if you've got the use going on, the onus really moves to the landowner to do something about it, and he can make various inquiries.
This part is just a comment on the facts of the case, isn't it? He's stated the principles.
Then, lord, so far as Lord Penzance, at page eight oh seven, he didn't agree there could be an easement at all, it's halfway down page eight oh seven. For these reasons, I'm unable to support the conclusion, so I don't pause on him. And then Lord Blackburn, which tends to be the opinion which is most remembered, is, we start at page eight one nine, when he's been going through Roman law, and I do this very carefully, because I'm aware that a number of your lordships are great experts in Roman law. But he draws attention, fourth line from the bottom of page eight one nine, 'By a prohibitory edict, uti posiditis', the pretor forbade anyone to disturb by force any position which had been obtained, nec v, nec clam, nec precario, and on that basis principally, but not exclusively, those three edicts and so forth. One had the origin of prescriptio longi temporis. And at the end of the main paragraph on page eight twenty, he's quoting Potier on Justinian in relation to incorporeal rights, of which he has had during the time, 'a possession or quasi-possession', it'll be quasi-possession of incorporeal right, 'peaceable and not interrupted.' And then there's a famous passage from Domat, if I pronounce him correctly, on the civil law, at the bottom of page twenty, who says that it's not necessarily considered a motive of these different dispositions of Roman law, 'every usage has its views, and considers in the opposite usages, and it suffices to remark, top of page twenty, here, what is common to all these different dispositions and customs, which consists in two views: one, to leave to the owners of things, and to those who pretend to any rights a certain time to recover, and the other, to give peace and quiet to those whom others would disturb in their possessions or in their rights after the time acquired.' And, my lord, having, and then there is one other, two other references, top of eight two two. 'I think, though, the English law of prescription was beyond controversy greatly derived from the Roman law.' And then, lastly, at eight two seven, foot of the page, five lines up, 'The edict of the pretor', now, my lord, one has to go back, the edict of the pretor is uti posiditis, which we had at page eight one nine, that's the edict of the pretor. 'The possession must not be v, nec clam', as I think is so far adopted in English law, that no prescriptive right can be required with any concealment, and probably none where the enjoyment has not been open. And then we get Lord Watson, and Lord Watson's speech begins at eight thirty, and he simply emphasizes in the second paragraph, on page eight thirty, the key importance of the support having been enjoyed peaceably and without interruptions. So, that doesn't take us very much further forward. Lord, could I at this moment just ask that there be circulated, while we're looking at Roman law, at the passage from Caracalla, which I referred to at the very beginning, so that your lordships have it? And this could be, is, I hope, numbered as bundle five sixty-two, and it really should perhaps be sixty-two and a sixty-two A. At page, the first page, is an extract from Lee's book, Elements of Roman Law, rather old, in nineteen fifty-six, page one six four, and it's under lapse of time, and it's the last six line, 'In the provinces, lapse of time, which came to be fixed at ten years inter presentes and twenty years inter absentes, gave a title to a servitude if the servitude had been continuously exercised under the tripartite test.' if the servitude had been continuously exercised under the tripartite test. But without, it seems, the usual requirement of good faith and just title. Ultimately, this became the general rule. And if your lordships go down to the footnote, which is to the Code of Justinian, the last passage is three thirty four point one, and that's the one I was quoting from. And if your lordship will go to the, on to title thirty four, title Roman thirty four. No, yes, title Roman thirty four. Unfortunately, there are two titles for Roman thirty four, the one which is on page three two three. The one which is on page three two three. And we've got the Emperor Antoninus, that's Caracalla, writing to Calpurnia. We haven't quite discovered who Calpurnia was. If you think you have any right of action against the person who rebuilt this house in a different way than it formerly was, and which now interferes with your lights, you will not be prevented from applying to the court in the usual manner. The judge will be aware, the custom observed for a long time takes the place of a servitude, i.e. gives right to a servitude, provided the party who makes complaint doesn't hold possession by violence or clandestine or under a precarious title issued. And my check says Gentianus and Bassus were consuls in two hundred and eleven. But I think the answer is it's the year two hundred and eleven to two thousand and twelve, because you didn't become a consul, I think, on January the first. It matters not for these purposes. My lord, no more then on that case. Can I then take your lordship, secondly, to Mann and Brody, which is in volume two at page twenty one, and which Lord Hoffman cites in Sunningwell.
Tab twenty one.
Tab twenty one. Important to note in the heading Scotch Law. Professor Trevor Roebauer is always lecturing about how one should talk about things being Scotch rather than Scottish. And certainly in the Law Report, we've heard of Scotch Law there. And of course, the law as to prescription and the acquisition of public rights of way was slightly different from the English rules, and that point is dealt with in this case. Now, just to turn to the facts for a moment. In Mann and Brody, which was a case as to whether there was a public right of way, the public faced two real problems. The first was that there was minimal evidence of public user in the period eighteen oh seven to eighteen twenty, which was the first bit of the twenty year period. There was some use, but it was a minimal use in the twenty year period relied upon. And in particular, there was very little use till a particular bridge had been erected. And of course, the whole question of quantum of use and use over the twenty year period was very important in a claim for a public right of way. The second problem was that, in any event, for thirty seven years, there'd been gates erected and no public use. And there'd been no protest about it. And therefore, there was an inference that there hadn't previously been a public right of way. And the claim fails on both those two related grounds. If I could first of all, take your lordships to Lord Blackburn, whose judgment starts at three eight four. And halfway down page three eight six. But it has also been held that where there's been evidence of a user by the public so long and in such a manner that the owner of the fee, whoever he was, must have been aware that the public were acting under the belief that the way had been dedicated and had taken no steps to disabuse him of that belief. It is not conclusive evidence, but evidence on which those who have to find the fact may find that there was a dedication by the owner. It is therefore, I may say, in England, never practically necessary to rely on prescription to establish a right of way. Now, all he's really saying there is you've got to have had an open use, and in such a manner, that is by the public. My submission, that's all that passage amounts to. And then over the page at three eight seven, top of the line, he's dealing with what's the law of Scotland. If the public had used the road to such an extent and in such a manner that they may have properly said to have possessed of it, to be possessed of it, and they've had the possession for forty years, they've acquired the right. Again, the key thing is, has there been sufficient open use? And then halfway down the page, I think that evidence of possession by the public, such as is proved in this case between eighty and forty six, would in England justify a jury in finding a dedication forty four six. It doesn't justify a finding a prescriptive right unless it's proved that it continued so long, either at the beginning or end of the period, as to amount to forty years. Because that was what was in Scotland. And at the bottom of the page, we've got the gate being set up in eighteen forty six. And we're then, I think, on to simply the facts, which I needn't take your lordship to.
The point of distinction, really, page three eight seven is on the point of dedication, isn't it? You didn't need it in Scotland, but in England you did in those days.
Correct. And then so far as Lord Watson. At the top of three, if I start at the very bottom of three nine to the bottom line, according to the law of Scotland, the constitution of such a right doesn't depend on any legal fiction as in England, but on the fact of user by the public as a matter of right, continuously and without interruption, we say again. That's perfectly, is simply the test which we would expect. And we see there a reference to Earthskin to use eucapean and so forth. And then down towards the bottom of the page, paragraph beginning although. Questions of nicety frequently arise, it then comes next to consider whether the use has been that of the public, whether it's been continuous and whether it's existed. Those are the key matters, and they're dealt with in our section fifteen by having a twenty year period by insignificant numbers in the public. And one sees the same point at three nine two, where in the top paragraph, he says it mustn't be user as can be reasonably ascribed to private servitude rights, because it was a public right-of-way claim, or to the licence of the proprietor, that's the precario point. Then as regards the amount of user, it must be such as might have been reasonably affected if the road is in dispute had been an undoubted public highway. And that goes to whether it's a public rather than a private right of way. And in the middle of that middle paragraph on three nine two, after the word wardhouse, he says, but that use did not amount to the assertion of a public right. And that there wasn't enough public right. And we can see at the bottom, someone tried to say, oh, well, the fact of the matter is that it was a popular landowner and people deferred to him. And that was all utterly irrelevant. Public user is a fact which must be inferred from overt acts of possession. And then at three nine six, in the second paragraph, fourth line, the facts were quite insufficient to establish that the road was used as a matter of right.
What's the punchline we're getting out of this?
Well, my lord, this, this is the case which is relied upon as saying that there's got to be an additional factor of an appearance of the assertion of a right. And, my lord, we say that there isn't anything extra in this. This is all perfectly compatible with the approach which we argue for, which is simply of a tripartite test. And that there isn't this additional factor in any of these passages, including that passage at three eight six. That's the one which, which Mr Lawrence particularly relies upon, the passage at three eight six in the central paragraph. And, my lord, we say that that doesn't really take the matter any further.
Yes.
My lord, if we could then come on to Gardiner and Hodgson's Brewery, it's volume one. And it's at tab fifteen. And those of your lordships who were involved in Beresford, remember some discussion of this case there. It's really very difficult, looking back, to ever think why Gardiner was decided the opposite way at any stage. That always tends to be the position when your lordships have declared on the matter, it all then appears absolutely obvious. But it obviously wasn't obvious earlier on in this case. And Mr, the Gardiner had been going through the brewery yard and was claiming it acquired a prescriptive title to take, to go through the yard. And the eventual finding is that there was a licence. And since Mr Gardiner was paying money over each year, it's real hard to see how anyone ever argued that it wasn't a licence. But anyhow, so it got, it did get quite to the highest level. The passage is to take your lordship to, I think, first of all, in the Earl of Halsbury at two three one. Eight lines from the bottom. I don't think this would have established a right in a proper sense, because being but a parole licence, it might be withdrawn and her action would be for damages. She'd have no right to the way. And in no sense could the right be the right contemplated by the Act, that's the eighteen thirty two Act. That right means a right to exercise the right claimed against the will of the person over whose property it sought to be exercised. It doesn't mean, and cannot mean, a user enjoyed from time to time at the will and pleasure of the owner of the property. Now, that phrase claimed against the will of the person over is construed in Mills and Silver, and we'll come to that in a little later, as meaning no more than without objection from the owner or without licence from the owner. And in Beresford, Lord Bingham adopted one of those views. And I think it was Lord Walker endorsed the other view. But anyhow, that it was either meant without permission or without objection. We'll come to it a little bit, a little bit further. Then so far as Lord McNorton, there's a, at two, three, four, five and six, he doesn't say anything about the tripartite test, but he makes it absolutely plain how he treated the matter at bottom of two, three, four. The only question is, can a person who uses a way and pays be as of right? Certainly not, he says. And if she can't show the user was as of right, the additional condition of success is wanting. And then there's a wonderful phrase at the bottom of two, three, five, where he says that this view seems to give the go-by to the words claiming right thereto and as of right, which are certainly not the least important words in the prescription Act. Now, if there was payment, it was plainly precario. And this was a deliberate circumvention of the Act. Lord Davy is the passage we've already looked at in Gale, page two, three, eight. Eighth line, to quote the well-known formula, an enjoyment as of right must be nec v, nec clam, nec precario, which we cite in our case at fourteen. And so far as Lord Lindley at two, three, nine, about the eighth line. I understand the words claiming right thereto in the prescription Act and the equivalent words as of right, which acquire in section five to the same meaning as the older expression nec v, nec clam, nec precario. So that case, they seem to have no doubt whatever, that as of right in the eighteen thirty two Act was simply dealt with by asking the tripartite test. Lord, could we then very briefly in volume three, go to, at tab thirty five, go to the case of Simpson and the Attorney General? This is not in the case, and it's concerned with, the Attorney General was trying to establish that there were a public right of navigation on the River Ouse and an obligation to repair the locks. And it was held that there wasn't a public right of way. But there's just one dictum I'd like to take your lordship to, and it's at page four nine one. And it's in about the fifteenth line, after the reference to the mare of Lyme Regis and Henley. This is tab thirty five, page four nine one. After the mare and the Lyme Regis, it is quite true that the court will go to go almost any length to support a right openly asserted, long-continued and never before contested, if it can find any legal origin for such a right. Now, in the present case, we say here that we've got the limits, we've got the exercise of the lawful sports and pastimes, we've got it not being contested, and the court ought simply to apply the Act. Lord, could I next come?
The phrase, if it can find any legal origin for such a right, what does that mean?
Well, my lord, that's in the case where you've got, we're looking at a dedication or a grant. It was dealing with, it was, although that case was, that case was being argued upon the basis that there was a, there must have been a grant at some stage in the past. Here, of course, we've got, we go straight to section fifteen, so we don't have that, we don't have that particular issue. What it does show, though, is the inclination of the courts for going back almost two hundred years, certainly a hundred and fifty years, to try and to support this principle of acquiescence. If the owner hasn't asserted his ownership and hasn't stopped the user, then the user acquires rights. That's, that's all. And, my lord, in our case at paragraph three, we cited Earl de la Walle and Miles, which is volume one eleven. I'm not going to take your lordships to it, but the quotation there is exactly on lines with that. The same principle of acquiescence, trying to uphold rights. I'm not going to take your lordship to it, because I then found the principle in Simpson, which being a House of Lords authority, I thought was rather better.
Did you say paragraph three in your case?
It's in paragraph three of, I hope it's in paragraph three of my case. Now, I'm having doubt. Let me just check, lords. No, it's not paragraph three, is it? I apologize for that, lord, let's just. Twenty three, I'm sorry, my lord, it's paragraph twenty three of my case.
Oh, yes, thank you very much, yes.
I apologize. Where the facts are proved, the court ought to be astute to discover some legal mode. It's exactly the same principle. Lord, could we then come to Cumbernold, which Lord Hope will be very familiar with, and Lord Roger and Lord Walker had to construe it in Beresford?
It was rather a long time ago.
Well, lord, it was, but I'm primarily interested in the, what was said in the House of Lords, but we'll also come to what you, my lord, said in the case at, when you, when you were dealing with it in the inner house. And this is in volume one of the authorities at tab eight. And at tab seven was the judgment of the inner house. But if we stick to what was said by their lordships. Now, this is another Scottish public rights-of-way case, ringing bells from Mann and Brody. The facts were unusual because it was through a shopping centre, and there were gates. But the gates were never locked in the crucial period. So that there was a twenty year period of use up to nineteen eighty eight, when the gates were locked. There couldn't be any, any public right of way claimed after nineteen eighty eight. The issue was whether there was a public right gained before then. Now, it is, in my submission, critical to remember what was a statutory provision. And one finds that, if your lordships will go to page four, top right hand corner, page four. And in the footnote one, one sees the prescription and limitations Scotland Act nineteen seventy three. If a public right of way over land has been possessed by the public for continuous periods of twenty years, openly, feasibly and without judicial interruption, then as from the expiration of that period, the existence of the right of way as so possessed should be exempt from challenge. Now, my lords, I regret to say that I failed to draw the attention of the Court of Appeal to that particular statutory provision. And I think indeed in the Court of Appeal, we were concentrating on your own judgment in the, in the lower court. But it's not only important to remember what is the, what is the statutory provision. One hasn't got the express words. One hasn't got the express words as of right in there. What is required is the continuous period and then openly and peaceably, which is plainly neck v, neck clam, and then the, without the judicial interruption. And the important point about this case is that there was no dispute that there had been a public use of the land. Because if I could ask your lordship to turn to page three, which is actually page forty-seven of the transcript, page three of, page three of the written, page forty-seven in tab eight. If your lordships would go down to the pre-penultimate paragraph. No, wait a minute, I'm sorry, my lord, I've, no, I should go to the halfway down, page three. I probably, I got the wrong paragraph. Before the First Division, do your lordships see that? Before the First Division, the appellant's did not seek to challenge the primary facts found by the Lord Ordinary, that's the first instance judge, and indeed accepted that there'd been sufficient use of taywalk by the public during the prescriptive period to satisfy what was described as the preliminary requirements for a public right of way. Now, that's an important point to remember. So what was in dispute wasn't whether there'd been enough use. People had been streaming through the shopping centre on this walkway. The issue were twofold. And we could, we read on. Their argument was that there was no evidence of use, which couldn't reasonably be ascribed to tolerance on the part of the proprietors. And for those of your lordships who are not Scottish, one has to remember that tolerance means permission in these cases, not what we regard in English as tolerance. So it should be reason, so the argument was whether there was an implied permission from the owners of the shopping centre, allowing people to go through. That was the matter and which had to be considered. And it was in that context that just below the figure forty-seven on page three, we see Lord President Hope said that where the user is of such amount and in such manner as would reasonably be regarded as being the assertion of a public right, the owner cannot stand by and ask that his inaction be ascribed to his good nature or to tolerance, i.e. permission. If his position is to be that the user is by leave and licence, he must do something to make the public aware of that fact so that they know that the route is being used by them only with permission. And Lord Norman was also cited. And then over the page, at the top of page four, in the first new paragraph, there is no principle of law which requires that there be a conflict between the interest of users and those of the proprietor, although on the facts of that, of that particular case, it was held that there was a conflict, but there was no need for there to be a conflict. Now, my lords, the Court of Appeal were persuaded by Mr Lawrence that much significant should attach to Lord President Hope's phrase, user is of such amount and in such manner as would reasonably be regarded as being the assertion of a public right, which we can see two-thirds of the way down, page three. Lord, I'm in an embarrassing position, as one always is, when one's asking the person whose words they were, when one's trying to say as to what they meant, which Lord Hope will know extremely well precisely what he meant.
I can't add to or explain what I said. I think it's in the public domain and it's for everybody to interpret it, isn't it?
But in my submission, in a case where the only issue was whether it was permission, one was looking at the use and seeing whether it was, all he said is, user of such amount and in such manner as would reasonably regard it as the assertion of a public right. Now, of such amount means plainly that it's got to have been for the requisite period. And there's got to be quite a lot of it, which is by the public, because otherwise it won't become a public right of way. And in such manner as would reasonably regard it as being the assertion of a public right, that takes us back to the language of section three of the nineteen seventy-three Act, that you've got to be openly and peaceably. And plainly, therefore, you've got to go on for a long period and enough people and openly and peaceably. That's all, in my submission, one can read into what Lord President Hope was there saying. That doesn't add anything to, doesn't really assist us in English law on the tripartite test. And indeed, it's perfectly consistent with the tripartite test. It's not saying that where the public is doing it, one's got to have an extra element. My lords, that is my submissions on that matter.
Well, you can say that Lord Johnsey thought that what I said was entirely in line with Lord Norman.
Yes, yes, lord.
You see the same sort of point.
Can I say, sir, I'm not saying this, my lord, I'm not taking any issue with what your lordship said, but I'm simply saying that it's not any, it's not any authority, much less reason, to suppose that in the present case, in English law, where the words are as of right, that one doesn't simply look at the tripartite test. To say that what your lordship said in that case, where you were solely considering the question as to whether there was a permission or not, and what you have, it wasn't a permission, that passage frankly doesn't with respect advance the matter. It is in no way inconsistent with the proposition for which I am arguing.
I think it may be important, you've already explained that this was an unusual case, but to see just how unusual it was. At the top of page three, there are five paragraphs with Arabic numerals showing what people were actually using this walkway for. And for instance, they were going to the bank to get money out of the bank. Well, if a bank had taken a lease of a unit in the shopping centre, it'd be quite surprising if the development corporation said, you've got a lease of the bank, but the public can't visit you without our permission. I mean, some of those cases, there must have been private rights of way for customers of the bank, the cinema, whatever, to go there, others like St Mungo's Church. Quite more questionable whether there would have been. But that's the picture we've got to try and give ourselves, isn't it?
It was a very odd case actually, because you've probably never been to Cumbernold, but the structure was a quite extraordinary sort of gantry. I mean, this is not people walking over the ground. They were at an elevated, the whole thing was elevated and going over a motorway and everything. And there were various little routes that led off what was effectively a bridge to these various things, like the church, the bank, the town hall and so on and so forth. And one of the puzzles is whether you could ever have a right of way over a structure. And we had to deal with that too. And that isn't this case, obviously, but the point was that the principles apply generally and it doesn't matter whether you're up above ground or on the ground or indeed beneath it.
Well, that's highly illuminating, but I think when one first reads this case, one's first reaction is to think, well, this is a bit surprising. Surely the shopping centre was licensing the people to come through. But then when one thinks back and applies the principle of acquiescence and the way I said it should be applied, and in the way in which certainly the House of Lords, and I believe they were endorsing your view, applies it, one simply says, has there been the use by the public for the requisite period? Has it been openly and peaceably? And is there a scrap of evidence that there was actually a licence as opposed to mere acquiescence? Answer, there wasn't a scrap of evidence of a licence and therefore it was a public right of way. But it does go quite a long way. And of course, it was a key stepping stone in Mr Lawrence's argument, which got him home in Beresford too, because that, as we'll come to in a moment, is another really green case, where there wasn't a, where there was, if I say wasn't a scrap of evidence, there was hardly any evidence to, from which you could infer a licence. But the important point from my proposition is I don't see that this case in any way stands in, stands in my way, in my submission, that when you're looking at what's meant by as of right in section fifteen in a straight English statute, which has been construed by your lordships, what as of right means over and over again in the cases which we've just been looking at, in particular Hodgson's Brewery, it doesn't stand in my path. That's my submission. And lord, I'm not going to take time going to your lordship's judgment in the inner house, but I do emphasise it's at paragraph seven and there are very interesting judgements on the matter, but I don't, for my own part, think that any of them stand in my way. The important thing though is, I say, that we haven't, the appellant doesn't have to show that he's caused any problems for the owner. Now, if you remember that bit about nuisance, when Scordile de Kime gave his evidence, Mr Chapman said, well, it seems that it was only Mr Kime who caused any nuisance to the owners. But what I said is that is completely irrelevant. Your lordship's house said, or your former lordship's house said, and paid for, no principle that there's got to be any conflict of interest. And so that again assists me in my submission on my interpretation. Lord, six House of Lords case, can we come to Sunningwell, which is vungle three at thirty-two? As I've already indicated, your lordship, this was actually a mixed-use case because the vicar, at least one presumes it was the vicar, the land was owned by the Darcys and Board of Finance, was actually grazing some horses on it. We see that at the bottom of three, four, six, letter H, the rector let it for grazing and received the rent. And we can see it later at three, five, eight, letter D. In the inspector's report, the land has been used throughout for rough grazing. And I checked the inspector's report and he said that there was a handful of horses on the land. So strictly, it is a mixed-use case. Then if we start by looking at counsel submissions, because it's important to understand what your lordships decide in the light of the submissions, if we start at three, three, eight at letter C. There's a little three, the dictum in Mills and Colchester, we've just looked at that, that was the customary law case, would apply to any claim of class C customary. The meaning to be given to the expression as of right in class C should be consistent with it. And we've seen that in Mills versus Colchester, it said that as of right, therefore it was the tripartite case. And, my lord, then at three, three, nine, and again, I'm in the submissions council for the appellant, at three, three, nine, letter G. The classic exposition of user of a right of way otherwise than as of right is used in section five of the Act of eighteen thirty-two in Brighton Walker, was merely exposition of the common law position confirmed by the Act of eighteen thirty-two that used to be as of right had to be peaceable, open and without permission. So that case was proceeding upon the basis being argued by the appellant that as of right meant simply peaceable, openly and without permission, and that Brighton Walker was perfectly reconcilable with it. And also remember, we looked at Brighton Walker in that first page of the Gale extract, which we were looking at earlier this afternoon. Now, my lord, the ratio of Sunningwell, we find at three, five, four, A to B in the fourth line, but there's no reason to believe that as of right, this is in the nineteen sixty-five Act, was intended to mean anything different from what those words meant in the Acts of eighteen thirty-two and nineteen thirty-two. That's the starting point. And then if we go to three, five, five, G to H. Starting at G, on the basis of passages from Jones and Bates, he, that's the judge, in steed, had there expressed the view that as of right meant user, which had to be not only the tripartite test, but was in the honest belief. And then, my lords, in my opinion, the casual and in its context perfectly understandable side of Tomlin has led the courts into imposing upon the time-honoured expression as of right, a new and additional requirement of subjective belief for which there's no authority, an unbroken line of dissent from the common law concept of the tripartite test in the Acts of eighteen thirty-two, nineteen thirty-two and nineteen sixty-five and so forth. And then at letter B, in the normal case, of course, outward appearance and inward belief will coincide, a person who believes he's a right will use it in the way in which a person having such a right would use it. But user, which is apparently as of right, can't be discounted merely because, as will often be the case, people didn't have the necessary belief. So that was the ratio of the case, that there was no need to show subjective belief. And then turning to three, to the other passages to draw your lordship's attention to page three, fifty, at letter H.
Sorry, three?
Three, fifty, my lords.
We're going back.
But still, yes, my lord, I've had the ratio so far, just to remind myself of the ratio. And I come to, and I come to certain other passages. Bottom of page three, fifty, at letter H, it became established that such user had to be in the Latin phrase, the tripartite phrase and so forth. For this requirement of the case of custom C Mills and Chitchester, the unifying element, Mills and Colchester, which we've looked at, the unifying element in these three vitiating circumstances was that each constituted a reason why it would not have been reasonable to expect the owner to resist the exercise of the right. In the first, because rights should not be acquired by the user force; in the second, because the owner wouldn't have known of the user; in the third, because he had consented but for a limited period. And, my lord, I pause here, in the present circumstance, we say, if the owner didn't want a right of lawful sports and pastimes to be acquired, then it was reasonable to expect the owner to have resisted the exercise of the right, instead of which the right carries on everywhere on this particular piece of land. My lords, then the next passage is three, five, two at letter F to three, five, three, letter A. He set out the passage from Mann and Brody. At letter H on three, five, two, I paused to observe, Lord Blackburn doesn't say there must be evidence that individual members of the public believed there'd be a dedication. He's concerning himself with the English theory required, with how the matter would have appeared to the owner of the land. The user by the public must have been openly and in the manner of a person reasonably entitled. But, lord, when one reads that in the context with the, of the earlier reference, one sees that that means no more than it's got to have been openly. Then, my lords, the next passage is, and I should just interpose, my lord, if your lordships want the full citation from Brighton Walker, you've got it in my case at paragraph thirty-two. That's the full citation showing that the judge in Brighton Walker was actually applying a neck v, neck clam test. So I've set that out and the case of Brighton Walker is tab six in volume one, but I don't think I need go to it. Then three, five, four, E to F. Starting just above F. Oh, sorry, I should, yes, I think I've already, I'm sorry, I'll let it start at three, five, four, A. I think I may have already read that, three, five, four, A. Then go to three, five, four, F. The decision in the case was that the reasons why people used the road were irrelevant. It was sufficient they used it as of right. I rather doubt whether in explaining that term parenthetically, Tomlin meant to say more than Lord Blackburn, they must have used it in a way which would suggest to a reasonable landowner that they believed they were exercising a public right. But if it is, if the use is open, it will be a use which suggests to a reasonable owner that people believed it was the exercise of a public right. And then three, five, five, at letter B. The question of whether it's necessary to approve the subjective state of mind of users of the road, in addition to the outward appearance of user, didn't arise and was not discussed. Now, the respondents rely upon that reference and say, well, the outward appearance, that that's something additional to the tripartite test. In our submission, all Lord Hoffman was doing was saying you don't have to have a subjective intention. Crucial thing is, was the user open, neck clam? Neck clam. Then, my lords, if I move on to three, five, five, G, where there's a quotation from Lord Justice Scott in the famous case of Jones...
On page what?
Bates.
Three, five, five.
Sorry, three, five, five, letter D, my lord.
Yes.
He's quoting Lord Justice Scott in the famous Jones and Bates case. It's doubtless correct to say that negatively, the words 'as of right' import the absence of any of the three categories. The statute doesn't put on the party asserting the public right to the owners of proving those matters. And then, three, five, seven, D, another passage relied upon by the respondents. It may be, of course, at letter D to E, that the user is so trivial and sporadic as not to carry the outward appearance of user 'as of right'. Lords, in my submission, that's really going to the question of, is there enough use to show that the local inhabitants are engaging on the land? Plainly, if there's only one person or only people there very occasionally, then you won't have got the inhabitants of the locality engaging in the right. But once you've got a substantial number of people engaging in the lawful sports openly, then there's no need to ask a further question about what was the outward appearance. And last passage, three, five, nine. And, lords, it's at paragraph F to G. Perhaps I could just ask your lordship to skim through that passage, which Lord Hoffman was endorsing about the benefits of the local community acquiring land where it had been acquiesced in. My submission is that there's been an erroneous attempt to elevate appearance into an additional factor separate from neck v neck clam, neck precarious. It's quite clear that the case was being argued, and we've looked at it, that 'as of right' meant simply the tripartite test. And to infer that Lord Hoffman was intending to add an additional matter is simply erroneous. My lord, if I could then go please to Beresford, and your lordships will find this easiest to follow in tab five... Sorry, in bundle five at page... At tab fifty-nine, although it was also, and it is also in bundle two at page twenty-nine. But there are very few pages which are a little bit difficult, a little bit indistinct. And so it may be better to go to bundle five, page fifty-nine, a case with which Lord Roger and Lord Walker will be extremely familiar. And another triumph of Maloney's friend, Mr Lawrence. On the facts, one had a large area of land which the local authority was planning to use for development. There had been various facilities laid out on it and it had been used by the public for twenty years. And it was held by the Court of Appeal that plainly there was an implied permission held by your lordship's house that there wasn't any evidence to infer a permission and therefore there was acquiescence and the land was registered. My lord, could I start again in the argument at page eight, nine, two, letter G? It's just before letter H. It's in the statutory land-owning body's own hands to prevent its land becoming a town or village green. It may prevent use altogether or render it precarious by granting an express licence. And that is something which I've been endorsing throughout in this case. If we then go to Lord Bingham's speech or opinion and if we start at paragraph three, at just above letter G, quotation from Sunningwell, 'it's clear law, as summarised in the last mentioned decision, that for prescriptive purposes and under the nineteen thirty-two Act or the nineteen sixty-five Act, 'as of right' means neck v neck clam, neck precarious, that is. In this case, there's no question of force or stealth, so the only question was whether by the licence of the owner. My lord, I relied on this passage below, but the Court of Appeal said, 'oh, well, it's not to be supposed that Lord Bingham was excluding an additional further test, that there mustn't be any element of deference or appearance'. In my submission, there's no reason to suppose that Lord Bingham in that passage didn't mean precisely what he said. Then, in Lord Bingham's speech at eight, nine, four, letter G, he cites from Lord Justice Parker's speech in Mills and Silver. And I just draw attention to the last bit of Lord Justice Parker's quotation. 'I add only this, that any statement that the enjoyment must be against the will of the servient owner cannot mean more than without objection by the servient owner'. And, my lord, that takes us back, of course, to Hodgson's Brewery case, Gardiner and Hodgson's Brewery case, with Lord Halsbury's phrase there. And Lord Bingham appears to be endorsing the way in which Lord Justice Parker had put that matter there. My lord, could I then move on to Lord Scott at paragraph sixteen? Lord Scott at paragraph sixteen. And he says, 'it is accepted that the words of 'as of right' import the tripartite test'. So he's approaching it upon that base. And as he correctly says, the issue is whether it was neck precarious. Then, so far as Lord Roger, it's at paragraph fifty-five on page nine oh seven. Paragraph fifty-five at letter B, 'long before, in Gardiner and Hodgson's Brewery, Lord Davy impliedly and Lord Linn expressly held that the words in the eighteen thirty-two Act were intended to the same effect of the tripartite test', Lord Hoffman's translated that phrase. So if the inhabitants have engaged in lawful sports and pastimes, neck v etcetera, for at least twenty years, they've engaged right and the land can be registered. And that's exactly what we say is the position here. Paragraph fifty-seven, there's an interesting and very learned excursus into Roman law in paragraph forty-seven. And at letter H, we see the pretor protects someone from interference if he's taken possession of land or begun carrying out work, neck v neck clam. And it may be, but only Lord Roger will know, that that's a reference back to the Praetorian prohibitory edict, utiposiditis, if I've got that right. Then, in Lord Walker, at paragraph seventy-five, there's an important passage from paragraph seventy-five to seventy-nine. Could I ask your lordship simply to skim your eyes over to it? Because it's now become the classic passage on the nature of acquiescence. And the key sentence is the first sentence of paragraph seventy-nine. But it may be quickest if I just ask your lordship to read seventy-five to seventy-nine. Then lastly, my lord, at paragraph eighty-one, Lord Walker cites from what Lord Halsbury had said in Gardiner and what Lord Justice Parker had said about it. And we've already had that passage in Lord Bingham's speech. And we see, just below letter F, 'I respectfully agree with both those observations', and that was accepting that the passage about assertion of rights meant against the will, that the passage against the will of the person was to be construed as meaning against... By 'against the will of the person', Lord Halsbury meant no more than 'without the licence of the owner'. It's D to E. It's that point I... It's that point which I have already made. Now, my lords, my next case would have been in Oxfordshire, but I'm aware it's four o'clock and your lordships may feel that Oxfordshire would be good for the morning.
I think we should rise now. How are you doing?
We're doing pretty well because, my lord, I anticipate I anticipate one more hour on this issue one and I shall then certainly be finished on the other issues for hold on.
Well, I think it'd be very convenient if you did that, yes. Well, we look forward to seeing you at ten o'clock tomorrow morning.